Well, okay, Sean's going to be a few minutes late and so we'll go ahead and get started. A couple of things before we get into the agenda, you see my little half sheet of paper here? I don't want anybody to feel obligated to come, but I think it's nice to spend some time together where we're not so focused on the things we have to do here. And as the discussion just earlier, the rules are very simple. It is perfectly legal for us to assemble as a group and have a quorum as long as we don't conduct any city business. And so, and I'll see if I can find a date where most people can come. I think it would be a very nice thing for the new council member, whoever that happens to be, to spend a little time with us and get to know us personally outside of the work of our council duties. And so we'll see if we can pull that off. So, and our style of entertaining, just so you all know, is very relaxed, so. And let's see, what else did I want to mention? I want to say something about the birds because everybody's gotten a lot of emails about the birds. It's yet another situation where Facebook has done such a great service for us as far as spreading rumors and fanning the flames. So these, the birds that were taken into our custody for safety reasons are in a safe place, they are being cared for by people who have their credentials to do that properly, and no decisions have been made regarding where they will be over the long term, nor do we even have an agenda in place as far as when those decisions will be made. So, but, we will make a careful, thoughtful, and well-researched decision before they are placed anywhere. So anyone that wants to listen to any other rumors on Facebook are free to do so, but what I just said is the truth of the matter. Right?
Is there any easy way to send out a blanket email to all these people that have emailed us saying that?
I suppose we could. Yeah.
I did. I said that, I sent them all, everyone that I received, I said that they're being taken care of at this time. There is going to be a release of information regarding the birds at some point in time.
Okay.
And I left it at that.
Thank you for doing that.
So.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, anything about last Tuesday that we need to discuss or debrief or correct? Because I wasn't there, so. All right. See, I watched it, seen it from a personal. All right. Anything else before we move on? Okay. Interactive long-range transportation plan, you mean, is that our first card?
You betcha, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. This is an opportunity for the council to provide feedback on the long-range transportation plan. And so we have our consultants assembled out in the lobby. If maybe we could reconvene out there and have them kind of walk us through that input gathering process. I think we'll be back in here in about 30 minutes.
Okay.
That's all right. Thank you.
And we think that there's a couple reasons for that. First of all, let me be clear, we have had, as you all know, a number of years of really high claims history and, you know, the bad end of that claims history cycle. know, the bad end of that claims history cycle. And so, we've talked a lot about that in recent years, so that shouldn't really be much of a surprise. However, with regard to our getting onto the plan at this particular juncture, council will recall that it was right about here, thereabouts, that we made some pretty significant plan design decisions. And plus, we had a year or so of really good claims history as well. The combined value of those dynamics did force our costs into a much more positive end of that claim cycle. And so, we're enjoying that positive benefit, if you will, right now. However, in comparison to where we think the state plan might go, there's a couple of dynamics that you should be aware of additionally as well. Indeed, moving into the state's plan, we would suggest that that will likely include more overall lives that would be covered for a couple of reasons. First of all, part timers and seasonal employees do have the option of signing on to the plan in the model that the state's plan has been designed around. And so, we assumed for purposes of this discussion that indeed, a worst-case scenario would present itself in both situations, the state's plan moving forward and the city's plan moving forward. The advantage that we gained here is that the plateau for the city's plan really is starting at a better point. And so, while it looks like there may be fairly consistent delta between the two plans moving forward, as you all know, that has the opportunity to create a new nexus in the future, depending, of course, on what we do, obviously, if we remain self-funded or whatever, or if we decide to move into the state plan. Anyhow, you add part timers and seasonals into this mix, particularly in a worst-case scenario, that's going to have an upward pressure on the plan's costs, even in the state side of the plan. The other scenario that you should be aware of is that indeed, the state's plan does include retirees that we do not include at this point in time in our, in our plan design, in our approach. If you'll recall, that was one of the factors that we changed in our plan design that we believe helped force this cost dynamic downward, or in a more positive scenario. So, with the state's plan, that, that particular design feature is actually reversed. All retirees until they die can be included, and we think that that'll have an upward pressure on what we would pay into the state's plan. So, the bottom line is, if you look at this particular piece of paper that you've been given as a handout, and I don't know if we have this on the presentation or not, you can see what we're talking about here. If you look in sort of the blue shaded area right here, you will find that in FY18, we think that the city, in comparison to the state's plan, would have netted just over a million dollars in savings. We think in fiscal year 19, being on the state's plan, would have netted $2.3 million in savings. However, again, kind of around sort of this nexus area here, in fiscal year 20, we believe that it's possible the city will actually stand to lose about $1.3 million if we do decide to go to the state's plan. And again, that, that carries a lot of features and assumptions that we're making in order to reflect that possibility. And that is with regard to the number that we've actually budgeted for fiscal year 20, but will not know, of course, in actuality until the end of, of the current fiscal year. However, when you look at the average with regard to those years in question here, we believe that the, that sort of the net savings to the city is still positive, an amount of $725,000 on the bottom line. So, again, kind of another demonstration of what we think we're seeing here, obviously, if you project forward and assume some things, there, there is a possibility that the state's plan will cost the employer, the city of Casper, more money.
Say that, you say that again, Carter.
We believe that if certain factors that we've built into this model remain the same, and it's quite possible they will not, that the cost to the employer, meaning the city of Casper, will actually be more, at least into the near term.
But that would, it would cost more, but we would be providing potential coverage to retirees, part timers and seasonal?
Correct.
So, that, so it could be costing more, but we'd be potentially getting more coverage?
Covering more lives.
Yeah.
Yeah. We think that that's a very real possibility.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I noticed from going through some of the information a little bit, that we had assumed the state's plan for these numbers we're looking at on the sheet here increased 10%. However, they don't even give us an estimate. This is strictly our in-house estimate. So, these numbers are assuming that that happens. And the other thing that we have here that, if you assume that doesn't happen, it's only a net difference of about $442,000, which is...
If it doesn't happen.
If it doesn't happen, which is one major heart operation for one of our employees if we stay where we are. Our risk pool is simply smaller, and so, there's, that's the other side of the coin. And I know, I know there's no way to predict, but those are just things we have to consider.
Well, if we can predict, there's more variability. We don't know up or down.
That's right. That's where we are now.
So, because of self-funded plans, what's our liability range? Like, I guess I don't know quite, quite enough about health insurance, but since we're self-funded, is there like, do we have some sort of like, insurance coverage, or I don't know what I'm trying to say, but like that, like, yeah?
A stock loss or...
Correct.
An umbrella or...
Is, is that pretty high? Oh, sorry. I was kind of addressing both of you.
That's okay. That's okay. Let me take the first crack, and then if Tracy has other things to add. I would invite that. To, to start, however, I, I would suggest that the only reason we built that 10%, you know, factor in there is because the state did indicate that there would be a double-digit percentage increase. And so, we assumed the best-case scenario of 10% versus, say, 20 or 15, or whatever that would be. And we already know that the city is going to incur a 14% increase should we stay in our current model. And we built that into, didn't we build that into this estimation? That's what I thought. And so, th- those are factors to, to remember. To answer your question with regard to the stop-loss piece of this, of this expense portfolio that we have right now, that is a piece of this puzzle right here. And that would not be something that we would have to, you know, bid out and assume the cost for moving forward. That would be something that the state, as a part of what they charge us, would, would potentially involve.
Yep.
Tracy, did you want to add anything beyond that? Okay. Okay. So, so while that is an advantage for us, it, it is built into this assumption, and you can still kind of see what that generates by way of expense relationship. Mike?
When we're talking about that stop-loss, the way I understand that is that that's an ass secure deductible that you have to meet, that we have to pay in-house. And then, if the expense goes over that level, then it would go to a secondary insurer. Is that, does that refer to, like Bob said, $400,000 for open-heart surgery? Is that a per event, or is that a total accumulation of claims during the year? Number one, and number two, what level is that at, if you know?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that, that reinsurance that we buy is, is kind of a second level, second-tier insurance for us for when we do have those real cataclysmic events, as you're correctly describing. In terms of what that level is, it's $200,000 per event.
Correct.
And so, while over a year's worth of time, it would obviously add up, it does protect us on an event basis.
Yeah, I mean, if an employee has a $400,000 or $500,000 plane, we'd pay the first 200, and then that secondary insurance comes in.
Correct. That's what I understand. Bob?
Does, does the yellow line anticipate using the 1585 that we just installed for our policy in April?
Let, let's talk about that for a second. If, if you will, if you will shift to this dense-looking spreadsheet, we can, we can help address that question. And I think we may have it here. I can't remember if it's, it's in the PowerPoint or not. What we've tried to do is offer you a side-by-side comparison with respect to the various options that are available with the state, of which there are several, and the two options that are available with the city of Casper's current model. Now, you'll notice on the far side of this portion of the spreadsheet, this column right here, you will see that, that percentage breakout. Now, the astute observer would notice that that does not say 85.15, but rather 83.17 and 89.11 percent of a split between the employer and the employee. The reason that that is not at an 85.15 level right now is because that resolution that you all passed won't take effect until the newer enrollment period, which is January 1. And so, were we to produce this then, those percentages would reflect that difference and consequently, those numbers. On the other hand, if you look at what it is that the state and state employees enjoy by way of a similar comparison, you would look basically in the middle of the page, right next to that gray bar, and find out what that looks like. Now, the reason that those numbers are not uniform and consistent all the way down the spreadsheet is because the state looks at it a little differently. The state has defined their contributions in a monetary value versus a percentage of the cost. And so, accordingly, you'll notice in the employer contribution, those figures don't change, and the percentages are kind of all over the board, albeit within a relative range, if you will. And so, it's a little bit of a different view with the state's plan, but nonetheless, the range by which employees enjoy that employer contribution has about a 10% change, if you will, depending on what plan an employee might choose. You see what I'm talking about, Mr. Hopkins? Councilman Hopkins? So, there is some comparability, but, but it's not quite apples to apples. Moving on to the concept of employee costs, the picture becomes quite a bit more interesting with regard to the state as a possible option. And so, maybe if we could, while you have this in hard copy, let's shift to that bar graph, if we could. This gives you a feel with respect to what comparative premiums look like for the employee on a monthly basis. This portion of bar graphs represent our current plan in comparison to the plans available with, with the state of Wyoming, or the state's health plan. You will notice that when you're talking about monthly premiums that employees pay, there may not be a ton of difference in some of those comparisons. But there are, in my opinion, advantages with respect to premium costs in most cases for the employee. The employer, on the other hand, meaning the city of Casper, will have higher premiums, so to speak, per month, higher contributions per month. And so, council should just be aware of that. Employees, on the other hand, will have a cost beneficial advantage moving into the state's plan. That is also demonstrated here. The other thing that you should be aware of, too, is that if you look back to this chart, understanding this dynamic here, you will see that the deductibles are quite a bit different with regard to the particular plan that employee may choose. For example, on the top portion here, you will see that one of the options that an employee can choose is a $500 deductible plan compared to our lowest plan of $2,000, right, from a deductible standpoint. The monthly premium for the employee in, say, a family scenario, looks like it would be $346, kind of reading over, toward the middle in that entry under the $500 deductible plan. And for comparative values, if you look to the employee contribution on the family side of the city's plan, there's not a whole lot of difference, but in this particular scenario, the employees and their family is better from a premium contribution of But again, that's comparing a $500 deductible plan to our lowest of $2,000 in deductible. If you look at the single coverage, if you will, just an employee, that employee's contribution is going to be $137 for a $500 deductible plan. Our lowest option, of course, again, is at $2,000, and the employee is going to pay on behalf of that, you know, him or herself, $128. So, that gives you a little bit of an orientation with regard to how that looks for the employee. On the other hand, if you look down at the, the, what we call the active employee $2,000 deductible, and you look at that premium that the employee pays per month, and we'll just look at the family entry of that plan, or that option, the employee is going to contribute $116.76 on behalf of that person and their family. And again, kind of going back up on the city's side, you will see that that same contribution of a similar plan, if you will, deductible at least, that will be a $335 monthly contribution. So, in my estimation, clearly, from a premium and deductible standpoint, in most cases, the employee is going to benefit to go to the state plan. But I'm, as far as the monthly contribution part of the employer, it is likely the employer will pay a little more than what we pay currently.
Carter, just to make sure that I'm tracking along with this, I'm looking over here, and, and I think that the prairie gold color you described, that under, on the city plan for the $2,000 deductible shows that the employer would be contributing $1694.84.
Right.
Under the state plan, if, if I'm reading this correctly, the city would be contributing for that same family plan, $1899.76?
Correct. That's the way I read it, too.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure I was reading.
That is what we understand, yes.
Yeah.
So, that's an example of, just a real clear example, in my opinion, of where the employee is going to pay substantially less, but the employer is going to pay a little bit more as a part of that monthly contribution. Ray?
So, as you're saying, and looking at the numbers as far as it goes, it would be a benefit to the employees, but if we did switch to the state, we'd end up having to pay greater costs from us. So, does it, is it a, is this helping to solve our problem? So is it helping to solve our problem if we go with the state?
I really like that question, and I'd love to build on it. But I know Councilman Freel had a question, too. Okay, because that kind of takes me to another part of the presentation.
Could I jump to it?
But it's a wonderful segue.
Oh, it is. Just like Charlie and I had just a second ago.
Yes. So ask your question one more time, Mr. Councilman.
Is this going to solve our problem as far as the issues we were having with the health? I mean, the whole plan, the whole idea was if we were going to go to the state, the health plan, this was going to help, you know, help us with our solvency as far as with the health, you know, health insurance. Is this going to help us? Is it going to create bigger problems for us if we spend more? What's the bottom line, I guess?
Okay.
Is that the question you were, hopefully that was leading towards?
Very, very eloquent question, yes, absolutely. And so I like that because I think that really dives right into the crux of what I think council needs to consider. Because at the end of the day, in my opinion, anyway, this question really boils down to, the recommendation that we would provide really boils down to two very primary and fundamental concepts with regard to this whole debate. And that is how much the council values the idea of being able to design their own plan, add features, take away features, add coverages, take away coverages, that you think most closely appeal and benefit the lives that you're trying to cover. Compared to the notion of, were you to shift to the state's plan, you shift also all of the risk that that luxury invites. So on the one hand, you have the privilege of being able to design the plan, adjust it to accommodate the needs of the employees, compared to moving to the state's plan, losing that luxury, but yet gaining the benefit of shifting all the risk, shifting that absorption that, Councilman Hopkins, you were talking about a little earlier, of bad cycles, bad claims history years, and so on, to a much larger pool. We're talking a pool of 37,000 people compared to our pool of, at best, 1,000. So for council, the decision is, what is more valuable to you? Having that designed luxury or being able to pass that risk?
Well, we don't have the ability to design a $500 deductible plan. So I guess a question, I don't know, do we keep numbers on this? How many of our employees on a percentage basis typically will meet that $2,000 deductible?
That's a good question.
I think that's one thing that we haven't got. We don't really know, first of all, you can't compare apples to apples directly. The only one you can do is on the $2,000 deductible. But we don't know the people that are in our plan, where they're at.
The reason I ask that question is, you know, for a family with a $2,000 deductible, we can talk about the cost of a heart surgery, but it doesn't take much to run up a $2,000 bill. I mean, even a relatively, you know, a broken ankle, you're there, you know? And that's a big expense for a family to have to meet that $2,000 deductible. And for us to be able to offer a $500 deductible plan, to me, would be a really nice benefit to be able to offer folks so they don't have to live under the worry of paying a $2,000 deductible the next time their kid, you know, sprains an ankle on the playground. Because that's a lot of money for a lot of people to come up with.
For you as the employer, Mr. Mayor, if I may, and if we could switch back to that initial cost graph that we looked at, the question you really have to determine is whether or not that dynamic of being able to provide employees a, probably in all reality, and in most cases, a lower-cost plan for, no, not this, the one prior, for the delta of cost that you will absorb on behalf of the employees to have that cost advantage of going to the state plan. Because we think, again, this is probably a worst-case scenario, and it'll likely shift back and forth over time in terms of which plan would be the cost leader. But the reality is, you have to just consider whether or not what you just described, that that cost advantage that employees will likely gain is worth the exposure that you could incur from a cost perspective by joining the state's pool.
I mean, my reaction is, and we're not really in discussion phase, but for some percentage of our employees, we essentially would be giving them a $1,500 raise because they wouldn't have to make, they would be eligible for reimbursement after $500 versus $2,000. And that might lessen the pressure that we feel to do cost of living increases or bonuses. Not that we wouldn't want to do those things, anyway, but the pressure might not be quite as intense if we were able to offer this kind of a benefit. So even more, it might cost us a little more. It might reduce some of the pressure for us to increase other benefits. It's just another way to look at it.
Sure. Well, and as you were kind of comparing, I go, I look at that and I go, right now, the current plan, and I asked this at the very beginning when I brought up, when we were talking about the insurance, why we couldn't do the state. But I asked a question, who can afford Casper's insurance currently? I said, anybody under $20 an hour. And the answer was no. Nobody under $20 an hour could really afford Casper City's insurance currently. You have to be making 20-something over in order to do this. Where if we switch to the state, if I understand it right, the person that's in the park service or the person at the work center making $8 to $12 an hour can have insurance now. We can provide that for them and take care of them. So really, to me, is, are we going to take care of our city employees? Or are we going to take care of those that can afford it, but not these guys? And that's how my mind, I guess I'm looking at it personally, is we need to take care of all the employees that are with the state, with City of Casper, not some, in my opinion.
All of these numbers, like the, it says here, under the $500 thing, it's $934.30 total premium. Is that per month, per year?
I'm not finding that number. That is a monthly calculation, absolutely.
Okay, so all of these premium costs that are shown here are all monthly?
Yes, sir, on this chart, that's correct. But depending on where they show up in those columns, they all have different meaning.
Right.
Just one more point of comparison for anyone who has small children is going to look for is out-of-pocket max because deductibles mean nothing when you have small children because you're going to hit the max, no matter what the max is. And so if you look at that, you know, the city mid-option compared to state option one, or even, you know, state option high deductible, the out-of-pocket max on our mid-option is $4,000 and the out-of-pocket, probably for an individual, and the out-of-pocket max on state option one is like $2,500. So that's yet another, I'm sorry. Sorry, second page on the blue one. Yep, and I mean, you'll see like the copays on like Wyoming network physicians, 80% on ours, 85% on theirs, 70% on ours for non-network, 75% on theirs. So I mean, these things seem kind of, I know we talk about premiums and deductibles, but these things matter, too. I mean, out-of-pocket max is pretty common for somebody with a family.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, a deductible is only one level.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Financial exposure for a family. Going back to your column, Mr. Mayor. One of the other things, too, that I'm not sure you picked up on necessarily, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is the fact that indeed, there are a couple of options in the state's array of options to consider that would include a high-deductible health plan which involves an HSA component. That is not something that's available to all of our employees in the organization. And so that would be a new feature and does respond, to some degree, to some in the organization who have expressed interest in the city looking at those kinds of options as a feature of our design, which we haven't done yet. So there will be some who would like to take advantage of that, but that has its nuances as well. And so if I could, maybe go into some of the differences that each plan bears, that would be helpful. And like I said at the very beginning of this conversation, there are probably hundreds of questions that could be asked about what the differences are here and there and so on. So if it's okay, I'd like to turn to this document here and walk through at least what I see as being some of the major ones, and then we can ask whatever fact-finding questions that you'd like to about some of the differences otherwise. We already mentioned retirees. And it should be noted that, as a reminder, that indeed, if we move into the health plan that the state offers, we will be offering coverage for all retirees. Right now, we do not offer coverage for those who are pre-65 and in that retirement category. And that was, again, one of those design features that we incorporated to try to save the plan cost, and it has worked so far.
Mr. Mayor, on the subject of retirees, are the fire department, police department treated the same, or their retirees treated the same as any other city employee or retiree?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, the fire department does have some options that the rest of the organization does not, and that's mostly in the form of the HSA options that they can take advantage of. Tracy, you want to talk to that a little further, if I may?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, so the fire department has negotiated that they get a, it's a retirement savings account, so it's a little bit different. And it's a portable plan that they can take when they retire and have its worth versus a health insurance.
Well, would they continue to have that if we went to the state plan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, I'm sorry for buttoning in, but since you mentioned retirees, I thought about that.
No problem. So that obviously is a difference. And again, I would say it's probably advantageous to the employee, but will constitute more cost for the employer. One of the things, too, that's different with regards to kind of a related concept there, members of the council can't actually be covered in the state's plan unless you happen to be a retiree serving on the council. And we do have that scenario in some cases from time to time, and so, but otherwise, elected officials cannot fit that bill. The pharmaceuticals is something that we've gotten a lot of question about as well, obviously, because there's a big spend year to year in pharmaceuticals, both from a maintenance standpoint and so on. I would suggest that the copay situation for pharmaceuticals is advantageous to the employee. I do not know if every single medication that we have covered in our formulary will be covered in the formulary that the state offers. We have asked for a disruption report, and because it's two different companies, it's not been as quick and coming. But my guess is that the coverage will be fairly similar, may even be better in term of what pharmaceuticals are covered. But I can tell you from a copay standpoint, that will be appealing to the employee. The copay is based on a situation wherein the employee pays a standard copay and does not have to pay a percentage adder above and beyond that initial copay. And so in our current plan, we pay a copay as well as some sort of percentage that they add on top of it, depending on what type of medicine it is. That percentage is not a feature of the pharmaceutical program that the state offers, although there are different tiers in which higher copays may be paid depending on the fact it's a maintenance drug or a regular sort of medication for dealing with sickness or injury or whatever. So I do think from a cost standpoint, for employees, those pharmaceutical programs are probably advantageous. The other thing that I think council ought to be aware of, again, sort of a major nuance with regard to what we do now. The plan that the city would like, you know, potentially be moving into with the state, the paradigm is different as it relates to copays in general. We are in a copay program right now with the city's plan. Moving into the state's plan, however, folks who take an office visit or whatever the case may be will not enjoy the benefit of a copay. They will have to pay the full price of the office visit, and it will go towards their deductible, which is different than what employees do now. On the other hand, as it relates to who an employee goes to see, the employee will have to be a little more savvy with regard to the doctor they go see because indeed, there are two additional filters that the state would have a consumer consider as it relates to not only out-of-network-type practitioners, but also practitioners that may be out of state in that the state's plan, for lack of a better way to describe it, incentivizes both in-state and in-network providers. And so the employee will have to be very careful about those considerations in that the balanced billing that would come after that visit with whatever that visit would entail or procedure would entail or whatever, pursuant to that filter of being out of state as well as being in or out of network. The similar situation, well, I shouldn't say that. When a person goes to the emergency room, there will also need to be a different analysis that the consumer would need to go through compared to what they do now. The state's plan requires that every ER visit bears with it a $100 copay, unlike our plan now. That particular copay, as copays typically do, does not work towards your deductible. On the other hand, the maximum amount of costs that an employee would incur for an ER visit would be $600 or their family member or whatever. So if I need to go to the emergency room six or seven times, I get $600 of payment that I'm going to have to cover. So I'm seeing some concern based on what I'm saying. Do you want to correct me? Please.
It's just a little off.
Okay.
There's a lot of information. The $600, the difference is that there is that, up to six visits, ER visits, it's a $100 copay for the emergency room visit. It doesn't go towards the deductible. But then you still have to pay that, the difference, until you meet your maximum. Did I explain that correctly?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if you go for an ER visit, you know that that's something that's usually, under the current plan, is subject to deductible and coinsurance. So you will be subject to your deductible and coinsurance for the full charges of that. In addition, for up to six times going in a year to the ER, you pay an additional $100. So at some point, we all know that that is very expensive. So, at some point, we all know that that is very expensive to go to the ER. At some point, you may meet your maximum deductible, your deductible and your maximum out-of-pocket, but you will still pay that $100 fee until you've met it six times. So it is a copay that the employee pays toward that visit. It's an additional $100.
We just want to make sure that it was understood that it's more than $600 that it's going to happen.
Yes, 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 I see.
So that's with the state plan, you're saying with the $100. Now what about with the city plan?
We don't have the $100 copay, but depending on your situation, we were looking at different hypothetical situations, it still might be to your benefit. And realistically, there's, you know, six trips to the ER, you know, it's not that likely, but it is a difference that we wanted to point out that that is a copay that the state that we don't currently have.
The state's plan disincentivizes.
Yes, in the emergency rooms, yeah.
Exactly right.
Which is a good one.
Which makes some sense. Somebody's going to the ER six times, there's something not right there.
Well, and that's per individual, so if you've got six people in your family and all of them need a trip to the ER once or twice or whatever, every one of those trips are going to require a $100 for them. Mr. Mayor, those are, members of the councils, those are the major things that we've gotten questions about. As you can see on the exhibit that we've prepared for you to consider over above this, there's a number of things that council can see by way of differences and nuances that are different and everything else with regard to choosing the state plan over the city plan. At the end of the day, this is what I would offer by way of a recommendation. I really do like the idea of shifting that risk and allowing for those, thank you, allowing for those fluctuations to be borne by a larger body versus the difficulty that we have absorbing fluctuations and of course, the significant amount of money that you need on hand to try to weather those types of downturns. And so, my recommendation would be that we do move forward with the state plan while it is more cost potentially for the employer, meaning all of you as, you know, the board of this organization, I still believe at the end of the day that the city will be better off, employees will be well-served particularly with regard to the benefits at the cost, the lower cost that provide them. Although I can't say that coverage will be better or worse because I think the plans are relatively comparable.
Yeah, I support Carter's position of having experienced state insurance back when I wasn't on Gieser insurance. State insurance was very good, the folks for Gieser worked with, the plans were competitive with anything I'd ever seen in industry. And when I retired, I was on state insurance as a hubby in residence as opposed to a work for the state, but we found the state to be very good to work with. And in the long run, the risk in being a bigger pool is something that I find really a good thing as a council member, because we run into on occasion when a council just doesn't want to stand up and say, "Look, we've got to do something different." And I think we tend to eliminate or minimize that risk by going into the state pool. And I think in the long run, it will be easier for both the city, and I know it's going to cost us money, but in the long run, it'll be better for both parties. And I really believe that.
I'm very much supportive of this, I have been since the beginning of when I first heard about it, but a question that I haven't asked is by switching to the state plan, the state dealing with our insurance, is that going to cost any city employee jobs? Or is there going to have to be shifts of what this person was doing now need to do this since if we go away from the city insurance?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take a crack at it, but yeah. There will be, Councilman, a reduced burden as it relates to the human resources department and other employees pertaining to the everyday oversight of managing a health benefit like we are right now. However, I can't say that we will be able to save as it relates to the amount of FTE that we have on hand. I would hope that it could, you know, and add those savings to a decision of this nature, but I'm not convinced that that will be the case.
Well, and I appreciate all the work you folks did giving us the state. It's a little daunting for the seven of us to make this decision knowing that it's going to affect four hundred-plus individuals. Are we, are people, our own people aware of this decision and do you guys have any sense of where the majority of our employees are landing on with this? Can you speak to that, Tracy or Carter?
Mr. Mayor, we have tried to be very circumspect with regard to not only our own thought processes and sort of evaluation at the executive level, but we've taken, in my opinion, quite a bit of effort to gather the insights of employees throughout this process. Many of you know that we have a health plan design committee that we've used as kind of a clearinghouse for this information and this dialogue. And I can tell you the majority of that group, at the very least, would say that moving to the plan that the state offers is a good alternative and the right way to go. I have visited with employees myself in small groups and oftentimes individuals and I hear the same thing from those efforts as well.
Mr. Mayor, I, as a general proposition, I absolutely agree with what Councilman Hopkins was saying, that getting into a bigger pool, to me, just, you know, looking way down the road is a really desirable thing. I question any value really in saying that, well, the city of Casper is going to design its own plan and everything. That's kind of like saying that we're going to invent the wheel and we're going to invent a better wheel than the larger group has already invented. And I'm really skeptical about that. I know that, you know, all of the brilliance in the entire world resides in this room. Just ask me, I'm the smartest guy in the world. But, you know, I'm being very, with all due respect to all of you guys, I'm being kind of facetious there because I really, you know, in my years of working for the state, I always had really good success with the state plan. Sometimes I was jealous of the city and county employees because at various times, they had better benefits than we had. But I really seriously question whether or not, you know, the city would truly be able to design a better plan, a better wheel than what the big state plan offers.
Well, I mean, the truth is, the way that flexibility has played out over my time on council is that we've had the flexibility when we were up against the wall to cut some benefits without requiring anyone else's approval. That's the only time that I know of that we've made on-the-fly decisions is when we had to. So.
And I don't know that it's so much about that we can design something like innovative or better or, it's not so much about the design necessarily, but it's about having that final say or that final interpretation of when the claim comes to us, you can sit down with the employee and go, "Okay, why did you do this? Why do you go to that doctor?" Versus when it's a state plan, it just gets sent off, they send it back as approved or not. I mean, there's probably an appeals process, but it's not going to be that fun. Or when it's us and we're the ones designing it, there's a lot more flexibility, you know, in a mom coming and saying, "There's not a pediatric neurologist here, I had to be lifelighted." Things like that, it can be taken into interpretation or with the state plan, we do lose that.
I don't know if I saw it on here or if it was in our work packet. If we choose to go with the state, was it, did it say in there, "We have to commit to five years"? Is that accurate?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that's exactly the case.
So, after five years, if we find that this isn't working for the employees, then we can switch, but that's five years down the road, that's not next year.
Correct.
And I think we should be mindful, the reason why I'm in this discussion right now is the Attorney General presented an opinion that municipalities are now ineligible, which is a change in course. And that opinion could be overruled by the legislature or a new Attorney General. So there is a window of opportunity here and so, if we did want to go down this road, we could probably want to move on this. So, people want to express an opinion? We've got a couple of opinions on the floor already, so.
Yeah, just one more point, and I don't mean to blow the time budget any worse than I have, but I really hope if, in fact, we vote to go with the state, that it will reduce some of the insurance administrative burden, if you will, on the city. And that would be helpful to have our employees doing something, hopefully, more productive if we can, simply because removing some of that burden.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into the many positives and there are negatives, I think of both of them, but I think this is our best option right now and I think that it's an opportunity for us to relieve staffing, but it's also to give the opportunity for this, some solvency and not, just not to worry about that risk down the road, so I'm in favor of it.
And I am as well. I think there's a trust element here. We don't know, but people running the state pool, our people obviously care about our staff and want to do the best they can for them. I think we have to trust that people running the state pool have the same mindset, that they're trying to make sure that they're providing the best possible benefits for all of the people in the pool and that they take their work seriously and try to direct by people. And so, are we ready to do a thumbs up on this?
Just really quick, the only other thing I'd probably keep in mind is just from an HR perspective, this is a really good opportunity to sell us goodwill as far as, you know, this is us taking the initiative to take care of our employees, even though it adds a burden potentially onto the city. And so, keeping it in that light and kind of projecting it that way, I think, also helps because not only are they going to have more money, you know, every month, every year, but just reminding them like, "Yes, you do have more money, but we kind of took that on as a benefit to you."
And why would we take all this input that has been collected?
Exactly.
And not pay attention to that, if that's what they're saying.
Thank you, staff, you've done a great job of putting a lot of information that's complicated to communicate.
Okay, so remaining six of us, thumbs up for moving into the state plan. Moving on to finance policies resolution. We're only an hour and 10 minutes behind schedule, guys.
Wait, no. Yeah, we're only ten minutes. Sorry, I was like, wait, what?
I always started at 5:05.
I was like, wait, how late are we going to be here?
We're doing pretty good, actually.
I was on the wrong column.
You got the blank to fill.
I'm going to excuse myself.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are passing around a sheet that would really be an addendum to what it is we want to talk to you about tonight by way of financial policies that I'm really excited about. I don't know if you noticed in your packets or not, but you probably saw a document that looks just like this in your packet, that really, in my opinion, represents the breadth of policies that we would like to cover with you by the time we are done with the installments of discussion that we'd like to have by way of financial policies and so on. So my one comment is, we're going to need, you know, parts two and three and maybe even four with regard to all the policies we'd like to propose to you, but tonight, we plan to cover the first three items primarily centered around reserves and which funds we think ought to have some sort of policy directive aimed at them. One of the things that you will notice in your information that you probably read in your packets is with regard to the, kind of the memorializing of what a finance committee does and why it's important to have that insight from some of your colleagues here. We have used a finance committee in the past as it relates to, we're kind of getting a preview of the audit and allowing for some real in-depth questioning and so on before it comes to the council as a whole. That's one example. I think there's other options, however, and other opportunities that staff could use the finance committee of council seats fit. And so, with the memorialization of that committee and its existence from now on, we would like to have more of an active relationship with the finance committee and get that sort of input and insight, again, as long as council finds that an appropriate exercise. With regard to the reserves that we'd like to talk about, you will notice that the sheet that we have provided for you as sort of a summary reference does not include all of the funds that you oversee as the city council. This is just a few of the operational funds that we think would benefit most acutely from having some sort of reserve policy in place. Primarily, you will notice that the general fund is chief among the funds that we would hope for your policy directive over. Much like we talked about in the budget presentation of a few weeks ago, we anticipate that the general fund by the end of fiscal year '20, and actually very close to what we have right now, would require about $16 million to meet a 120-day operational balance. As you can see here, the current estimated balance is $16 million and the proposed 120-day calculation is at $15.9.
Oh, we need a drumroll here, don't we? That's a big deal.
It's a great situation and I'm very grateful that we're able to report that. We're hoping that that $16 million, that $15.9 can remain intact over time and throughout the deliberations of councils that come after you. And so, we're asking that that 120 days be ensconced in a policy that would be contained in the book, if you will, once we get through the whole thing. There's a number of others that we would like to suggest. The general fund probably is the one that would have the most operational balance given its precarious, excuse me, precarious nature and the fluctuation that can take place with regard to many of the operations that it supports, which are the majority in the organization. If we shift down to sort of the latter half of this presentation, this spreadsheet, starting with water, we've talked a lot about the water reserves, the sewer reserves, the sanitation reserves and so forth, particularly during the rate hearings that we go through and the pro forma statements that we share with you and those kinds of things. You will notice that the water fund, for example, has a current estimated balance of $7 million. The proposed reserve policy includes not only an operational balance of 90 days, but also a capital balance, if you will, of a year's worth of depreciation. I'm not sophisticated enough to tell you exactly how that's calculated, I would have to defer to Tom and his team to give you some of those acute details. But we believe that with regard to the general approach that I just described, you would only need about $5 million. And so, we are technically $2 million to the good. Now, you'll also recall however, in the enterprise discussions, that indeed, we tend to look toward having a 10% buffer over and over and above that, that, um, that policy mandated threshold. And that's typically to sort of give you sort of a, a, a warning zone, if you will, as it relates to getting close to being inside of those, those reserves. And so, um, with regard to that in mind, as it relates to the water fund, Tom, is that two million dollars representative of that buffer? Or what do you think, as just an example, what that might be for the water fund?
It would be, yeah, you'd need probably another million, million and a half. Do you still need five hundred thousand?
To the good, okay. So the water fund is a healthy fund and, and that's, that's no surprise to you. I would suggest, much to Andrew's chagrin, that if our balances can remain this healthy, I would feel uncomfortable recommending a rate increase this coming year. I just would. Look at him. He's speechless. On the other hand, if you look at the sewer fund, um, ah, excuse me. The wastewater treatment plant fund and perhaps even, um, refuges, we, we are going to be in a less than ideal situation as it relates to the proposed policy guideline that we, we would hope that you could help us support striving towards. We're a little low in that regard. As you can see there, we've got, in wastewater, for example, two point nine million dollars in an estimated balance, but the policy would suggest that three point four is a better position. That is a, that is a fund that you are helped, uh, in the management of by the, uh, the regional board that sits and hears some of those discussions as well. The refuse fund, we will talk about it at rate time as well. Again, not as high as perhaps the reserve policy would suggest, but I think we have a trajectory that will get us there eventually. The bail fill is in a much stronger position in that it is over and above what the proposed policy would suggest. We have a couple of other interesting dynamics going on with regard to the funds that we would propose at this point in time have a mandated reserve balance. The golf fund is one that, um, this would be a very new concept for. The, uh, golf fund is one of the only recreational enterprises that actually has a propensity to provide a profit. And so, um, what I would suggest that as we move forward and as we have done from time to time in the past, that when that proposed reserve threshold is met, that indeed those surplus revenues, so to speak, would be turned back into the general fund. That's been a recommendation that we've carried forward to you from time to time. I would like to see that memorialized, that language memorialized actually in the policy. We have a couple internal service funds that having a mandated reserve policy might generate some question in that, in order to meet that fund's obligation and perhaps reserve threshold, that means we would likely have to charge the general fund operations and other operations that contribute to that fund or need the services from that fund in order to make that balance happen. That becomes a fairly delicate balance to find when it comes to each one of your budget discussions, because again, when you're having to charge a general fund for those kinds of balances or for that kind of a goal to be met, that adds operational cost to the general fund and doesn't allow for other things to happen in the general fund, whatever that might be. So that one would be one that will be interesting to, to talk further about if you should ever decide to do that, particularly around budget timing, uh, in those times. The employee health insurance fund, obviously with regard to that particular fund and the resol- uh, resolution you passed not too long ago, we would suggest that you would need three million dollars to be in a good operating condition. It, with that fund, when we are in a self-funded paradigm, if we move to the state program, obviously, we're not going to need that amount of money to reside sort of residual in the ba- in the balance of that fund. So what I would suggest is that the part two of the conversation that we just ended with council's direction to move into the state's plan, I would like to propose some recommendations, if you will, as to how that six hundred thousand dollars should be maintained. Um, once we conclude that that number is fairly resolute and, uh, and, uh, we prepare some recommendations for you to consider. So I guess what I'm saying on that particular entry, if you would allow us to come back to you to have that part two discussion regarding health insurance, that would be appreciated. Uh, beyond that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, not a whole lot different to highlight with regard to this series of policies. I would say that having policies of this nature is something every city in town in Wyoming should do, given, given the, in my opinion, inappropriate expectation that we have on sales taxes to, to, uh, to bail us out, you know, from year to year. As you know, sales taxes are very variable from month to month, from year to year, and the largest majority of those funds are not funds that the city gets to bring back into its coffers in that, uh, a lot of those funds are shared with the state and not easy to predict and plan for. So healthy reserves, I think, are an absolute must for cities and towns to have. And, um, it would surprise me if all cities and towns didn't go in some kind of direction like this moving forward.
Questions for Carter?
Just a couple of quickies. Obviously, we're, we're addressing just operational funds here and it's probably not appropriate for a perpetual care fund or opportunity fund. I see we've got another policy coming up on one percent.
Yes.
And for the revolving land fund, I assume that would be down in the administrative funds, is that?
Yes, that's exactly right. That's exactly right. So, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hopkins, the opportunity fund would likely come during the optional one cent sales tax, uh, policy discussion. And the perpetual care fund and the, um, the revolving land fund, as well as a couple of others, would likely show up in that, uh, section ten, if you will, of, of our discussion.
So just, just to be clear on this then, none of this discussion, uh, impacts the, uh, the capital needs we're facing with the wastewater treatment plant that are over the long term, those, those funds are being kept elsewhere?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, the, the policies that you're discussing right now certainly help us to perpetuate operations in, say, the sewer program and, and the wastewater treatment plant. You will need to address more aggressive, um, approaches as it relates to the twenty million dollars that are needed for the wastewater treatment plant, as well as, in conjunction with the regional board, some of the capital needs that the regional water plant has, um, as we move over time. And so while, um, this doesn't detract from being able to pursue those kinds of discussions and goals, I would tell you that, uh, capital needs are something that we will need to plan for and, uh, work towards in concert with these policies in the respective funds.
As follow-up to, because discussions of rates, uh, clearly have to include both of those concerns, operations as well as long-term capital needs.
Absolutely.
So while we may have the reserves where they need to be and operational expenses may be met, we may still need to adjust rates to increase the rate of savings so that we can handle those large expenditures down the road.
I think that's a very good assessment, Mr. Mayor.
Questions, comments?
If, if I may.
Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A while back, we had talked, uh, we kind of set policy goals, not policy goals, but we set income goals for enterprise funds.
Mm-hmm.
And we, we had levels for the golf and so forth and we kind of did that. And, but we've also got the, the, the enterprise funds, the sewer water and whatever. Uh, I assume that would be part of our revenue requirements in section six when we start talking and not codifying, but, but putting it down where we, we've got it. That's, that's where we're planning to put that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hopkins, your, your, your suspicion is correct.
Okay.
That would be an element of that portion of policy discussion.
Well, because I think we ought to pay for our sewer and water as we go. With some reserve.
I like it.
We're really putting something in place that's going to give some guidance to future councils over the long term. Something that, okay. Well, uh, how do people feel about this? Any discussion, concerns? Or you just need us, need us to say, okay, looks good?
Yes, a- as well as maybe in the, um, future conversations about agenda setting, timeframes, being willing to allow us to come back to the well, so to speak, to talk about these other policies.
And how to get all these numbers up for there. The ones that are below, how we, how we get them up where they need to be.
Absolutely.
Everybody okay? We're all good?
Very good, thank you.
Okay, on to the wage and compensation study.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, you should have gotten a memo in your packets here recently that, that outlines basically the history of where this type of conversation has gone in years past, as well as what it is that we recommend by way of scope for the wage and compensation, uh, uh, study that we would like to undertake. Ju- just to speak sort of more broadly and then work towards that definition of the scope. Council, recall that during the budget process, we did set aside sixty thousand dollars for, uh, the, the hiring of a consultant to help us put all this data together. Furthermore, we had conversations about, um, value-added positions and how we can bring, um, intermittent positions, if you will, in between some of the larger gaps of promotion opportunity that might exist in, in various departments throughout our organization. You will notice in the history sort of discussion, if you will, um, it has been some years since we have had, uh, a study completed and recommendations for, um, our salary structure to be adjusted. In fact, I would suggest that the last time council heard a formal presentation of that nature would have been back in twenty fourteen, the beginning of twenty fourteen. And so, in my opinion, the need to have this, um, insight from, uh, some experts being brought into the discussion is overdue. Accordingly, we would suggest, if you will notice on your memo that we provided you over the weekend, that the scope should include both an ex- external and internal structural alignment with classification and compensation. We think that we need to have our qualifications reviewed by, uh, our consultants to ensure that we are in line with the market in terms of what our competitors might be doing in their recruitment efforts. Uh, we also want to get some help in terms of, again, reconsidering that, uh, that value-added position opportunity that may exist throughout the organization. And we would also suggest, and this one's, this one's a, a big one, that we would want to understand what it would take for our, our organization and the positions they're in to be at the seventy-fifth percentile of market. And, and I will tell you, that's, that's a little ambitious. Uh, but, but I think it's something that, uh, represents, um, a good benchmark to know how competitive we are, because I think if we are at seventy-five percent or better, we are in, what I would consider, a very competitive position. If we're not, it would help to understand what it would take to get there and, uh, and then, of course, council can determine how competitive we want to be, say, if we're at fifty percent or sixty percent of market or whatever. And my guess is you'll find that in some positions, we're very competitive, some positions we're not, uh, and, and therefore those decisions, of course, will need to be made to determine whether or not we want to be consistently and uniformly at whatever comparative rate of market.
Questions for Carter? Bob?
Yeah, I, um, again, I would encourage us to use the employers' council, which used to be the Rockin' Mountain Employers' Council. I know there's other places to go, but they're, they're pretty good at what they do. Uh, the other thing, I, I guess it's the council issue, but, um, I think we're going to include our employees and that's council employees, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Next up?
Yeah.
Questions, Steve?
I guess I would have the question that it looks like back in November of thirteen, the categories that were reviewed were hourly, salary, police non-supervisor, employee supervisor. Would, would that happen this time? Or beings that we've talked about a different plan for the police department, would they not be part of this study?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I would suggest that, that all of our positions would be a part of the study. And so, uh, it would include the categories you see here as well as the rest of the organization. Uh, and so, um, I'm proposing that our study would be much more comprehensive this time around.
To include fires, then?
To include fires, well.
Okay.
Yep. You bet.
Any discussion on the proposal? We're being asked to basically give approval to move forward. So, everybody okay with that? Don't make any more questions? No, it must have been a very persuasive, uh, little spiel, Carter.
I appreciate that, yeah.
I think we're all okay with moving forward and getting some, getting some data.
Outstanding. We will do that. We hope to get, uh, an RFP out, uh, by end of summer, early September. And, um, we would like to have data for you and, uh, and recommendations in plenty of time in order to design the next year's budget and, and make those decisions that would help us design the budget accordingly, so. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Now we're ahead of schedule. Okay, if there be no other business, we need to design our, our work session agenda for, I don't have my calendar in front of me, four weeks, no, I guess it'll be five weeks from today, since we don't have a meeting on the thirty first. So what would be the thirteenth of August, though?
I think that one's.
That one's seven, the twenty seventh.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
So, the twenty-seventh is looking pretty clear, folks. What do you, what do we want to do?
Real quick, if I just made touch, did anybody hear back on for the work session on the thirteenth of visiting Gaspur? I know Vice Mayor Johnson was going to check into that, but did anybody else hear? If they were, weren't, I'm just wondering what, whether that was meant to actually happen, is that the question? Yeah. She wanted to do a presentation, is that correct? And, um, so we thought about throwing it on there and so I, I, I guess I was just asking because if that slot's not going to be filled, then maybe we could have filled it in addition to the twenty-seven or leave it as be, but I just thought I, I wasn't sure if anybody heard.
I would be surprised if Brooke didn't want to take advantage of that opportunity.
Right.
That's right. So, oh. I don't know, but she's always said she'd, she'd have to come before council and talk about what they're doing any time we have time for her, so. Would you agree, Steve?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, we will, uh, make that happen. And we'll just take that, uh, question mark off the docket.
She has a good reason that she'd want to delay it. We'll just have a shorter meeting on the thirteenth.
And we'll tell her she can come in January.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so, on to the twenty-seventh. What is your pleasure, council?
We've got videos to watch from that WAM, right?
We do have those.
I would suggest that we add the two staff suggested items.
Mm-hmm. I agree. Okay, everybody okay with that? Are you, you guys are ready to talk about Meadowlock Park and the Popular Street Bridge? Well, let's get going on that.
Yes, sir.
Um, do you wanna do the WAM video on the open meetings? That was the one people seemed to be interested in.
Kind of a hot topic right now.
Have a little discussion on that?
Sure.
Okay, I'm sure we have, let's see, twenty minutes, twenty minutes? That, I imagine would take ten, unless we have a lot of discussion about it. So we're up to fifty minutes. What else would people like to talk about?
Do we have any of the information on Goodstein Lot, please, sir?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, it could very well be possible that we could have a draft to bring forward, if you wouldn't mind holding that on a ten day basis.
We all wanna see that happen if we can. It's certainly a long process.
We'll move in that direction.
That would also be a fairly brief discussion, I would think, so. Okay. Mr. Mayor, request items. Remember the Health Department discussion, can you refresh my memory what that was, Carter, do you remember?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that was the, the opportunity that, uh, was envisioned where the new director from the Health Department would come and visit with the council about some of the community health issues that they're facing and, and, uh, be primarily, uh, informational.
These are the trends, this is what they're most concerned about. But, right, and have you had conversations with the new director about this, and do, did they make a request to come before us?
They did, and Mr. Mayor, you'll also recall, but, um, much to my chagrin this time around, uh, they wanna talk to the council about getting more money out of the city for support of that operation.
And that actually dates back six or seven years, till when I was the liaison. Well, our budget's already fixed, so I guess that would be about next year, so. Kristen?
Um, I actually had her a little bit of discussion about this arborist licensing around town. I don't know how much time it'd take to necessarily prepare that, but I know that we're coming up on fall, which, you know, like, there's a lot of fall storms, which results in a lot of, like, tree work being done. Um, so, I mean, it might be good timing to bring that up, especially if we want it done for, like, this next cycle. But I don't know whom needs to prepare stuff for that meeting and what kind of time they need allocated, like, notice, I guess.
There would be some prep time to do that.
Oh, John.
They have, um.
Tom?
Mr. Mayor, Council, uh, I've already scheduled, uh, to, uh, to work on that a bit, so I have some preparation already done. I think we could probably pull that on the twenty-seventh.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Sounds good.
We could also incorporate, uh, former Mayor Sandoval's suggestion about the zombie trees, because he suggested that we have a contest where people would carve their trees after they're cut down to a stump, and then we might have a citywide competition for what was the the nicest sculpture made out of those zombies.
Sounds like a lot of chainsaw accidents we need to have.
Which I actu- I actually thought that was kind of ridiculous. I mean, maybe I'm just, you know. Okay, well, I think we're pretty close to a full agenda then.
Yeah.
Uh, could you reach out to our Health Department administrator, her name, and ask if she'd like to come with that data on the twenty-seventh of August? You talked about what's going on? And, um, and most people wanna add something else, Bob?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I just wonder, um, if they might wanna edit one out, the tow fee policy review? I'm, I'm not sure that issue hasn't really solved itself via the market, but, uh, there was a lot of concern about.
We did, we did, we, yeah, we did get some emails with some concerns about, uh, inconsistencies, I guess, and, and how those policies have been implemented, and some of the situations these towing companies find themselves in with their, with their lots building up with cars they can't get rid of, but is that why that's on there, or is?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you recall, um, the conversation that we had previously with the council, our work session format was with regard to the inconsistency that we were receiving among some of the charges to our citizens.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
For, uh, cars are being towed and.
As I recall, some of the issues when we got to digging into it were like, you got a car with one wheel falling off, and it's, he's gonna have to jack it on there and pull it on, and you know, that's gonna cost more money than just towing a car that's rolling onto a trailer. All those kinda things do add up, and I, I, I guess I, I'm just asking, I, I don't know that there's a huge problem there, quite honestly. Unless you're good.
Well, the chief did, and, and which is how it got on there, I think, if I remember correctly. Maybe you could have another conversation with him to see if that still needs to be on the card, and if he feels strongly that we should talk about that, we can add that maybe to the thirteenth.
Well, or, or leave it on there, but if it's resolved itself, it'll, it won't take much time and we can move on to other stuff, yeah.
You can tell us next week whether that should stay on there. I think we've got a decent agenda for the twenty-seventh already, though, so let's, uh, let's call it good, and we're working our way through there. Now, before we leave, is there anything else people wanna add to the proposed work se- session agenda items? Okay, sounds good. Well, let's go around. Steve, you got anything?
I guess the only question I have, there, we had discussed a few months back on, um, there's some contracts with, within the cities that are gonna come up for review and possibly a RFP like the golf in particular. Is, is there a timeframe on those when we need to start looking at structuring those, I guess, or, oh, I'm assuming we'd have a part in that, but and then I guess in that particular one, would that take place, or how, how soon do we need to get on that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, um, speaking more broadly, ca- council did a lot of work in terms of the one percent contracts and those kinds of things. Uh, speaking, you know, sort of more specifically about the golf course, um, we would anticipate that conversation coming to a head, uh, early fall, wouldn't you say, Mr. Cortez? And so, uh, indeed, the preparations for that discussion are underway, and, uh, and we would need to have that conversation with you. I, I'm gonna estimate here, September, October.
Correct. We're, we're currently pulling together, uh, data, details, possibilities for you right now.
So it probably would make sense, in, in the spirit of what we just did, adding that to a staff suggested item, uh, that would, uh, be pushed out a little, of course, into the, uh, early fall, I think.
Anything else? Nope. Mike?
I trust that none of you took offense at my facetious comments about everyone's brilliance. If any of you did, you know, I apologize, that's just my sarcastic, mean sense of humor going through. And so if ever I, any of those comments bother anybody, trust me, I don't, if, if I mean to bother someone or to, you know.
You'll make a doubt.
You'll. You'll, you'll know that I'm going. Uh, the other, I, I do have a question about, uh, the, uh, questions that we're gonna be asking, uh, potential the applicants that we have for Councilman Walsh's place. Uh, when are we gonna figure out, have, have those been finalized? If not, when are we gonna finalize those? Are those gonna be secret?
Did that last week, didn't you?
We did.
We did?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I guess I didn't see that. Are those secret questions, or they, uh?
Nope.
They were in the packet, yeah.
Well, and, and we're in here, put them in the article, so they're not a secret anymore. But, but, Mr. Mayor, what we can do is, uh, reissue those questions in this week's information packet, and you can kinda be thinking about those questions over the period of time.
A week off.
Yeah, that's right.
Must have missed those in that week's package, but, yeah, okay, thank you. I'm not as brilliant as I thought I was.
Since you brought that up, though, I think we should all feel very good about the number of candidates who stepped forward and, uh, and the quality of the candidates who stepped forward. It, it, uh, uh, obviously, there are no people who see this as important work and, and are attracted to the, the option of being on the council, so that's a good thing. Anything else, Mike?
Uh, no.
Ray?
Nothing.
Oh.
Yeah, uh, actually, four items, but they're all one thing. Uh, this work session has been, uh, exceptional. Uh, first of all, to have discussion about finance resolutions, to go forward with the wage study, uh, to make a, a very significant decision on going forward with the state health plan and the long-range transportation plan. Uh, that long-range transportation fan, plan literally has to be done in order to get any federal money. And the outlook that they have on it is, well, it's very, very controversial, where you're gonna put a big street, not in my ranch yet, but in my neighbor's ranch yet. Those are really difficult issues, but Aaron has really worked hard on that, and it's, uh, it's something we're gonna have to deal with, you know? We, we have to keep the traffic snarls to a minimum, and I did notice there were two little circles that were called.
What are they called?
I won't go there. Thank you.
Roundhouse?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, nothing to me.
I got several. Um, one is, uh, I don't know the story on the firefighter, if he's recovered or not, that got hurt by the hose, but reminding citizens, eh, don't run over fire hoses, um, but I hope he's doing well, and I'm assuming he is getting good care. Um, so, I send out my sympathy to him and his family. Um, a few things that I gotta do this week and last week, um, uh, that I learned, Metro, everybody has a bad taste in their mouth, or some people do with Metro, that they just come and take animals, and doing a ride along with Metro and seeing the kindness that they extended to people that didn't have what was supposed to be done at this particular timeframe, and just the kindness that they showed, and the phone calls that, when they talk to people, and just how kind they were to those people, was really cool and really neat to hear. I learned a lot, um, from them, uh, stuff that I didn't know, so, um, and then I gotta be with this, uh, stormwater, uh, crew, and I didn't realize how easy plastic bottle will plug up a sewer, uh, net sewer, uh, what am I thinking of?
Inland.
Uh, the storm sewers, yeah. Um, how they plug it up, or grass clippings, those that blow it out, and then it goes down, and it just starts to build and build, and pretty soon you have a overflow, and then find out that that's what causes sinkholes. Um, I didn't know any of that. That was really cool, so I've been watching people's gutters, uh, driving down the straight more since I did that. Um, gotta go to, uh, the streets department, and I gotta, I gotta do two. One was coming down here and watching them lay the asphalt, and I actually, my phone has a flare on it that does the thermal reading, and sure enough, that's coming out three hundred and two degrees, the asphalt, plus the sun shining on these guys, and they're just raking it and smoothing it, and making sure, and I'm just like, oh my gosh, you guys are amazing. Um, and then the guys on Second and Beverly, uh, I thought they painted those black strips with the white, the crosswalks. I thought they painted it. Found out, they take something kinda like paper, lay it down, and then they heat over, and it just sinks to the cement and binds to it. I, I don't know if y'all knew that, but I didn't. Um, so that was really cool to get to, and again, they're out there in the heat with all the traffic running back and forth near them, just like, oh, man. Um, that, yeah, I worry about those guys out there. Um, gotta go through our water department and to here, and I'm gonna get this wrong, so I hope somebody can help me. We don't just meet the BPH? EP?
EPA.
EPA, standards, but to come find out that we exceed, uh, our water says, uh, them, they exceed it, which is cool, and then, as one of them said, uh, that was, uh, from another state that, uh, actually from Jersey, he's like, doesn't make sense that we put that fresh water on our lawns. He was, uh, he, when he moved here, he was surprised that we do that. That's pretty cool that your lawns is getting really good water. And I asked him, I said, is the water better, Casper better than bottled water? And they come find out that because the standards are much higher than food and beverage standards of water, that actually Casper water's better than.
So, what are you doing with that water?
I know.
It's refilled.
Cause I know it's just as good.
Uh, so that, I know, that was bad, that, thank you.
Bottled water's a scourge.
Um, so, that was, uh, really neat to find out, and then today I gotta go with, uh, uh, Casper, um, service officers or community service officers, and we, they found out that there was a trailer, an abandoned trailer, crappy, on the bike, right next to the bike path in the interstate, and the guy that I was with, Mr. Tyler, he said, um, he hit, found it and put the sticker on it at nine o'clock. He was adamant there, to be there at nine o'clock today to get that removed, so, A, anybody passing through our town on the interstate does not see that, and everybody that walks that bike path or, uh, walk path doesn't see it, and I thought that was really cool because they are adamant about keeping our streets from having too much, um, cars that aren't, that are expired or, uh, stolen or trash like that, um, and helping keep Casper beautiful, so. These are things I just took away from that, um, that was really, really cool, so I just wanted to point that out. Last thing is a touchy subject, and I'm sorry to touch on this, especially overall. Somebody brought this to my attention. There was articles on the, uh, a article posted by someone on the internet, and then it was brought up again, uh, in a different way. And I guess what I wanna say is, what one person does does not reflect a council's opinion on anybody or anything, and I guess, uh, have any animosity towards another council in any way, shape, or form because of something else, um, I hope that we don't, and I understand that it can cause that, but one person's opinion does not reflect another's. And I just hope that everybody understands that, and I think we all know what I'm talking about, but, and if not, see me afterwards, and I'll be glad to explain it even more in depth.
Okay, that's it. Well, I just have this to say, I, I was at my track meet last week, and that's why I was gone. We were in Iowa and Minnesota, and, uh, I've got the mosquito bites to prove it, and it was hot, and it was humid, and being outside was miserable, and I came back to Wyoming, and we sat out in our yard, and it was beautiful and bug-free and, and no humidity, and we've just got it pretty good here, is my conclusion.
But how fast did you run your race?
Uh, B-plus. Got a couple ribbons. It was national championships, that wasn't bad, so. But okay. How many people? If you don't mind me asking? At the meet? Oh, usually average about fifteen hundred or so. All right, I think we're done.
Let's just take this.
Have a great week, everyone.
Good on you. Thanks, everybody.
Now, I'm, I'm going to, uh, break with my normal policy of sending emails to council members, but once I arrive at a date, I will send it to all of you, to all of you, so you can plan it out. And I will try to pick a date that's gonna work for, for everyone if I can.
I'm fishing the last two dates, so have fun if it's those dates.